Welcome, Melanie, welcome.
Hey, Jason.
All right, just a quick point of order. Mayor Gus Walter will be unable to join us this evening and has asked that I chair the meeting for tonight, and I will do so the best that I can, and ask that y'all bear with me at times. Any disclosure statements we still have to read, Irene?
Yes, let me scroll to some people where how to participate via public comment through Zoom.
Excellent. Thank you. So this meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, which suspended certain requirements of the Brown Act in order to minimize the spread of COVID-19 virus. If you wish to participate in the meeting, please do the following. Public business session participation is welcome through the use of Zoom at a link that is on the agenda located on the Cloverdale website. To read it out would not necessarily help you. The webinar ID for this evening is 875-866-44435, or by telephone you may dial area code 669-900-6833 and enter the webinar ID of 875-866-44435. Again, that's 875-866-44435. Zoom attendees will be muted until they are called upon for public comments. To make a public comment, use the raised hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or you may dial *9 if you are using just your telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor or vice mayor in this case, or city clerk to address you by name or phone number, and for the audible Zoom notification that you have been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, you'll be allotted three minutes. Zoom instructions can be found at a link on the agenda here, which can be found on the Cloverdale website. If you would prefer to submit public comment in writing, please email your comments to iwerby@ci.cloverdale.ca.us. Also, there is a link on the agenda, which can be found on the Cloverdale website. If you are commenting on a specific agenda item or items, please state the agenda item number in the subject line of the email. All comments received via email will be provided to the subcommittee in writing and included as a part of the record of the meeting. The City of Cloverdale thanks you in advance for taking all precautions to prevent the spreading of COVID-19. So with that out of the way, allow me to welcome everybody, city staff. Thank you for being here, members of the community. Thank you for joining us. I believe we will kick off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, and next I believe that will bring us to the roll call.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember back.
Present.
Councilmember Burden.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Walter.
Please let the record reflect that Mayor Walter is on an excused absence. Agenda review, city staff, if you please.
Vice Mayor, members of council, one modification to your agenda this evening. Ms. Katrin Chapa with 10,000 Degrees has indicated that the students that you'd like to present are just busy working on their finals. And of course, we support them in their endeavors and wanting to get good grades, and has requested that we reschedule the presentation. So unfortunately, Katrin was unable to join us this evening, but we will work with her to bring her back to provide a presentation to council as soon as we can.
Thank you, David. Sounds like a fair excuse if I've ever heard one. With that being said, we'll move into a public comment. Attendees will be muted until they're called upon for public comment. Again, to make a public comment, use the raised hand icon on your smart device or dial *9. This is intended for items that are not on the agenda. You may comment on any item not on the agenda at this time. It will be heard, but cannot be discussed or deliberated on at this time. Well, discussed is got a bit of a leeway there, but anyhow, I digress. You'll be provided about three minutes to do so. And with that being said, Irene, are there any public comments in Zoom?
Let's see, no hands are raised at this time, Vice Mayor. Oh, wait, I do have a couple. Hold on. Let me start with Riley Reasoner.
Thank you.
Riley, you should be able to unmute yourself, and then you have to go away to comment. I see your microphone is unmuted.
Is this one for me here?
Yes, Riley.
I'm sorry, Irene, I'm on my daughter's computer. This is Todd Landz.
Oh, okay.
And my name is wrong on here. That's why I didn't answer. I really apologize for that. I had to jump on her computer the last minute. Sorry, Vice Mayor. I really apologize for that. My daughter is on my computer logged in as your student liaison.
Yes, indeed.
And I had to comment for this. So I apologize for, I hope I'm not burning up my three minutes here.
Oh, you absolutely are. So you got about 10 seconds left. Let's get it together.
That's why I love you, Vice Mayor. Okay.
No, please, Todd, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council members. This is Todd Landz, not Riley Reasoner, here as the representative of the school board for the Unified School District. And we just have a quick letter to read to you guys regarding some future things we have coming up. Cloverdale Unified School District began working with the city almost four years ago to identify property that could meet our mutual need for a new school, for sports fields, and for recreational facilities. The city's school subcommittee members, including city staff, visited many sites together to explore the possibilities available. Both the city's parks and fields and the district's gyms and fields are used by the schools and many youth and adult groups to meet the recreational needs of our mutual constituents and community members. These types of facilities lead to lifelong healthy lifestyles and vibrant communities. We would like to continue to partner with the city to increase these mutual resources. It is in the best interest of the city, the school district, and our community to do so. With the city's assistance, we've identified the property we ultimately purchased at the south as a good fit to address many of our joint needs. Since then, in consultation with the city's school subcommittee and the developer of the Bumgarner property, we have developed a plan to include many amenities of mutual interest: sports fields, parking, restrooms, and a dog park. As has been expressed at the city's school subcommittee meetings, we remain committed to transferring the area identified as a dog park to the city. Further, with this idea, we have taken it upon ourselves to look for a better site for the proposed skate park. Trustee Lance has identified a location and spoke to the property owner, who is more than willing to enter into a long-term lease with the city. This identified property is larger than the current proposed site and would offer more safety and possibilities for the community and kids. With this, the district would like to continue working towards the following: trading our dog park area on the south end of town, along with the portion of Washington Street that runs in front of Washington School, with the city in exchange for the land adjacent to our new middle school gym, creating a shared-use agreement between the city and the schools for the facilities on the south property, designing parking and student drop-off area on the land in front of our new middle school gym in coordination with the city and their extension of Washington Street, developing the recreational facilities on our south property with the commitment by the developer of the Bumgarner property to do the rough grading and bring in the utilities underground, granting easements for the rancheria and city to bring utilities through the district's south property with the city and rancheria's commitment to fund the work. We really want to work together and change the belief that we are tit-for-tat and not working hand-in-hand. We would rather be partners together than fighting against each other. And I think that swapping land and working on projects that help our city will make a big difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Todd. Council members, city staff, do we see a pathway forward to entertain and see how we might be able to at least entertain those ideas?
Mayor, members of council, because this item isn't agendized tonight, but if you'd like trustee Lance to submit his letter, I think we could refer to a subcommittee or alternatively bring it back directly to council and have a conversation, discussion, and possibly a joint workshop with the school board sometime after the start of the new year.
Excellent. Thank you, David. Todd, sounds like you have a pathway forward to get this moving.
I do, and I really appreciate that. The problem will be December, I believe it's the 9th. I will be changing seats, and so I will pass this on to another school board member at that time to take my position, but I will do whatever it takes from whatever seats that city manager Kelly or the mayor and vice mayor want us to do.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Irene, anybody else for, oh, sorry, Todd, yep. Irene, anybody else for public comment?
Yes, I have someone from a Samsung Galaxy S7.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi, my name is Martha Dominguez Glumas, and my comment is regarding the proposed water rate increases.
Martha, is it okay that we ask you to hold your comment until we have that item on the agenda? Typically, this section is for...
No problem. I apologize because I'm not sure how this works.
Oh, no problem at all. No, that's perfectly all right. So when that item comes up, which is the item after our consent calendar, once we approve that, then when public comment opens, please raise your hand again and offer your comments.
Okay, I apologize again. Thank you.
No need, absolutely. Irene, any other hands raised?
No other hands are raised.
All right, can I have the agenda back, please, Irene? Excellent. So according to city staff, Katrine was not able to join us this evening. We look forward to her presentation at a rescheduled time. I believe I saw Summer was on with us this evening. Is that whose name I saw? Yes, she is. So Summer, you have a student liaison report for us?
Yes, I do. Okay, good evening, everyone. So right now at the high school, we've been having the ASB meet, which is basically like the city council of the high school, and they've been working on some morning announcements for all the students, which has been actually pretty nice to get back to some sort of normalcy, having our little announcements. We've also started doing small group instruction at the high school for English language learners and the special ed students, which has been extremely helpful. And our principal has explained it's working great with the small group instruction. Conditioning for sports teams is also continuing as it was before with COVID restrictions. And the school has announced that they are exploring a new bell schedule for the upcoming semester. Because of the limits this one we are working with right now has proposed, students are having a hard time with it. They're working on a new schedule that could potentially have us doing our first through third period in the first quarter of the second semester, and then fourth through seventh in the second quarter of the last semester. But nothing is official. It's just a plan. And finally, the principal and vice principal and school counselor have been doing wellness check-ins with some students who are struggling getting proper lunches and education and just having a hard time, and they are continuing with their wellness checks. And as of right now, those are going smoothly.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Absolutely, Martha. Ask away.
Yes, Summer, I just want to make sure that you remember and that you pass on to the student council that any volunteer work at the senior center or at food distribution on Monday afternoons between 4:00 and 6:00 will be counted as community service credit for students. So just remind them and make an announcement on that because we welcome all to assist our elderly and our people during this time of COVID. Thank you, Vice Mayor Turner.
Absolutely. Thank you, Martha. Council members, any other questions or comments for the student liaison? Seeing none. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Oh, I'm not immune, am I? No, I'm not. Okay. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Council members, anything we'd like to see carved out?
No.
Seeing none. Members of the public, it's an opportunity here if you'd like to see any items removed. You'd raise your hand. Irene, do you happen to see any hands raised?
Some hands are raised, Vice Mayor.
Excellent, and I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Move the item, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, sorry.
Did I hear a second from Mary Ann?
And?
Sure.
Okay. Irene, we had a motion moved by Melanie, seconded by Mary Ann.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Burden.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye. Thank you. Communications, any communications to bring up during this time?
I submitted my report in writing.
Excellent.
I did too.
All right. Moving on to public hearing items, number eight, Proposition 218, public hearing on water and wastewater rate increase. City staff, who would like to offer the presentation at this time?
Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to provide a presentation to council on this item.
Thank you, please.
Okay, I'll commence. And joining us this evening is Mark Hildebrand. Mark Hildebrand with Hildebrand Consulting. He was our rate consultant that helped develop the financial plan and rate update study for this effort, along with Bob Reed. Bob Reed has been a long-term consultant with the city in assisting with our previous rate analysis in 2013 and 2016. The item tonight is a public hearing on water and water rate increases. And the requested action was adoption of a resolution to adopt new water rates as well as new rates for our sewer or wastewater rate schedule. As part of this process, city staff issued what's referred to as a Prop 218 notice. And this is in accordance with the legal requirements for setting utility rates. After the council workshop on August 26th and subsequent workshop at the city council on September 9th, council did settle on a preferred alternative in terms of proposed adjustment of rates. Based on that direction, city staff sent a Prop 218 notice to all property owners as well as all utility customers, both water and sewer located within the city of Cloverdale. And that notice was a 45-day notice in advance of the public hearing tonight. As many of you know, we have approximately 3,300 connections to our utility systems. And those connections vary almost daily as new connects are added or folks move and they disconnect. And so it's always kind of a moving target in terms of the exact number of utility connections. But after issuance of the notice, and I just want to ensure the council that this is the legally required process, and we followed it very carefully in consultation with our city attorney, and we had advanced review of the notice to ensure that it was in full compliance and followed the model that many of our neighboring utilities utilize in terms of the noticing process. After the issuance of the Prop 218 notice, which set forth the proposed rate adjustments over a five-year period of time, city staff was the recipient of really a significant number of letters protesting the proposed rate increases or objecting to. A number of these letters, or I would say a fairly significant majority, were form letters that were distributed either on social media or distributed directly to residents on their door. However, there were also a number of other letters providing comment, particularly that providing what I call very substantive input that I think requires some further evaluation. Despite our work of staff over the preceding three months in working with our financial team to bring forward a financial plan that addresses the financial viability of both our water and sewer enterprises, staff really recognizes that the community has expressed quite a bit of concern about the proposed rates needed to support our utilities. And while we think that these rates are sorely needed to provide the necessary investment in our infrastructure, we believe that there's an opportunity at this point in time to really further engage the community in the rate-setting process and further review the financial plan that has been developed. And I do want to point, it is available on our website, and it should be available right from the mega menu on cloverdale.net. And I encourage the community to review that rate study. It's also part of the agenda packet tonight. So really where I'm going with this, Vice Mayor and members of council, is staff's recommendation is to end the Prop 218 process this evening or otherwise place a hold on the rate establishment process. Because rate adjustments are important for the ability of the city's utilities to continue to provide... Because, you know, rate adjustments are important for the ability of the city's utilities to continue to provide, you know, safe reliable services, particularly potable water for our community. Really, we want to, we want to have a conversation with with the community about these important investments. The 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 rate study did identify, you know, a number of capital investments that were really, as staff sees it, very critical to the viability of our utilities. And I think it's it's important to, you know, have a have further conversation with 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 members of our community and garner their input and ultimately a comeback with some additional scenarios for the council to consider. Because, you know, making rate adjustments is is so critical to our utilities. I recommend that we try to do this, you know, post haste. And even if council is so inclined, maybe set a date this evening for a possible, you know, public workshop as as early or as soon as in January of 2021. So with that said, we're recommending that council really not take any action tonight. Direct staff to kind of not so much go back to the drawing table because there's a lot of work that's been done on on the financial plan. That that work that work remains viable. It reflects, you know, where we stand today. But, you know, offer the offer the opportunity for the community to really engage with the council and staff and looking and understanding and helping maybe prioritize some of the investments that are identified in the capital improvements in the in the in the rate study. So our plan tonight was, you know, unless council otherwise directs, was to not, you know, walk through our long and detailed presentation. Maybe preserve that for future discussion with the community via public workshop. But, you know, this juncture, I'll kind of bring it back to council and determine if you if you have any thoughts about staff's recommendation at this particular point in time.
Thank you, David. Council members, any any comments on that? Questions about David's statements there?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
Please.
Okay, I couldn't agree with David anymore. I'm 100% behind this idea. I personally don't care whether they've reached the 50% level with the letters that had to be sent in. I know that I know for a fact that it's well over 1,000. So even if it doesn't reach that 50%, I think it's a really good idea to step back, not do anything with this, and just let the public have some input into public meetings. Although I do realize that these have to be scheduled fairly rapidly within the next couple of months, just to give the public input so that we can stay on 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 an ongoing basis with the rate adjustments. We all know we're going to have a little bit of a rate adjustment, but I just, I think this is a great outcome. I think I've never seen, well, maybe two or three issues, but the public's really stood up this time and made a comment. And I hope, I really hope that the public stays more engaged. I got to say, I was really tired as a council member to sit there and see maybe one person or two people at council meetings. I find it very good that people are standing up and taking notice. So I'm 100% behind David's idea.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Marta, Melanie, anything to offer? Marta, please.
Yes, I agree with Mary Ann and David. I do believe that this needs to be further discussed. We need to explore alternatives and possibilities so that everybody is at the same page, that we don't sacrifice one or the other. I also would like to take this opportunity to thank the public who has come forth with an opinion, with a voice, which is what we want and need in in our municipal local government. I wish for you to pay attention to the date that is going to be set for this public workshop so that everybody can get appropriate information, correct information on what it is that it's needed in this in this situation. As you all know, water is essential. Water is something we take for granted, but it doesn't come free. And once again, it's an opportunity for the community to study this in a little more depth and also to give the city administration an opportunity to show how this money is spent. The money that comes from any increase goes directly to water. It doesn't go to any other expense in the city. So I thank you for your presence, Cloverdale, and I hope to see the same kind of participation in the upcoming workshop. That's the only way that your voice will be heard and where opportunities will be brought about. Thank you.
Thank you, Marta. Melanie, please.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I couldn't agree more with David and my fellow council members thus far. I mean, it's been, I think everyone appreciates how difficult public outreach has been during COVID-19. You know, we have done everything that we can, we've been able, that everything that we could to keep this as transparent and open as possible. We've had multiple meetings about this subject. The presentation is available on YouTube, and I encourage, you know, everyone who's interested in this to go ahead and take a look at the rate study. Again, it's in tonight's packet just so that you're familiar with all of the moving parts, the information. And, you know, I think that what you'll see is how incredibly difficult it is for a small city under 10,000 to maintain its own systems. You know, we're not part of Sonoma Water. We have our own water treatment plant. We do, we have our own sewage treatment plant, and it's getting more and more expensive for small rural cities like us to be able to maintain the system with, you know, when we keep our population suppressed and we don't have as many ratepayers spreading the costs and sharing the cost. So it really, it's more than just, you know, I'm looking forward to a conversation. I'm hoping that everybody who has, you know, submitted letters is going to be part of the workshopping workshopping and part of the the conversation. But it's also valuable to understand the role that future development really plays in our infrastructure plans as well. And so hopefully that'll, you know, trigger a continued conversation about making sure that we can continue to deliver a high-quality product, which we definitely do at a at a great price point and realize that going into the future as costs rise, we need to be able to, you know, share those costs with with additional ratepayers. And what's the the best way to and the most efficient way to do that? So I look forward to, you know, continuing this conversation with the community. So thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, for an opportunity to to speak about this.
Absolutely. Thank you, Melanie. Summer, I also want to offer you a moment. I know it's it's kind of well, it's a serious issue, water, and you're a youth of this community. Yes, sir.
My voice, okay. Well, first of all, I would like to compliment and commend the action that you guys have just taken. I think this is a a great step, even though it may be retrenching. This thing came as a shock to many people, and many people don't have time to always know what the city council is doing. And we felt that we were kind of blindsided with this thing. I guess if we had paid more attention, we would have known. But however, the 900 and some odd written responses you got are a real indication that a number of people were very concerned by this. Clover Springs, of which I'm a resident, the board of directors unanimously agreed to protest it, and that's another 362 hookups that are represented here in Clover Springs. Our water budget for irrigation, of which much of it is on city-owned property, is about $25,000 a year right now. With the increases in four and a half years, we would be up to just under $50,000. That's a lot of money. I know that improvements need to be made at times, but I don't really know if enough thought has been given to this. The question that I was going to ask, is there any guarantee that the money raised by these increases in rates will be used strictly for the updates and the improvements that you want to make? And you don't have to answer these questions now, but looking forward to public hearings, these will be some of the questions. Has the city looked at other sources for the money? Is there any grants out there that that we could use? Are new developments coming into town, are they paying their fair share of the developments that are going to be necessary to support them? So anyhow, I just want to say I'm really proud of Cloverdale. You came back to, you know, listening to the people and you recognized that there was a problem with this when you get, you know, a third of the residents actually taking the time to write something in. This is a time of huge challenges for families and seniors due to the coronavirus, due to the costs of things going up. Money is very tight for low-income families and to raise their water bill, you know, 20% a month over over five years, 100% is a lot of money. So once again, I hope that the public input that you're looking for is well-publicized. It's tough now. We don't have a local newspaper unless you go online, and then sometimes you don't get it. And again, congratulations to those of you who won reelection or a new election. So again, thank you very much. Wayne Diggs from Clover Springs. Bye.
Thank you, Wayne. Irene, any other hands raised, please?
Yes, we have a few here. Sorry. Okay, and David Johnson, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi there. My name is David Johnson, new resident of Cloverdale. I've been here for about two years. And I would say that when I first got this notice, I was a little side blindsided by it. But I also noticed one thing in particular, which is I found highly to my attention was, in my neighborhood, there's quite a few Hispanics and not one notice was bilingual. And so part of the community, you know, is everybody. There's homeowners that I've had to explain this to, both my neighbors are Hispanic. And they asked me to explain it to them, like, what's happening? And so I was then taken taking my time to explain them that, you know, we're increasing our water bill. It's going to be double in by 2024. And that was one of my main concerns is that that everybody had a say in it, if they speak English, Spanish, or any other languages. And that's all I had for my comment.
Thank you, sir. David, can you, David, sorry, forgive me, Irene. David, can you comment? Is that is that observation correct? Were we not able to get that out in Spanish?
Vice Mayor Turner, that that is a correct assessment. And I think Mr. Johnson's comments are spot on. I think as part of renoticing pursuant to Prop 218, we as staff will make sure that the notice is provided in both English and Spanish. Of course, it does take additional time and resources to do it, but it's absolutely vital to ensure that 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 community outreach is done as part of this process.
Vice Mayor?
Please, Marta.
I can't believe this has happened, David. I mean, it's like I have been an advocate of bilingual information to the community of Cloverdale over and over and over. I just, you know, thank you for bringing it to our attention, but I assume all along that it had been a bilingual announcement.
Thank you, Marta.
Yeah, I received the same. I received the same feedback. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Jason. I received the same feedback and I voiced my concerns and city manager was very receptive to the the comments, so.
Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate it. Did we get Mary Ann back? I thought I saw her name drop off. Oh, she's here. Excellent. All right, Irene, please, if you would be so kind, the next member of the public.
Yes, I have someone with Linda's iPad.
Yes, hi, my name is Linda Redding, and I live here in Cloverdale. And I too want to say thank you for listening to the constituents here and putting this on hold. I want to further say, you know, I have heard you about you followed whatever the statutes are, but I feel like there's doing what the law says and there's doing the right thing. And burying that notice on page five of a big, long notice, I don't feel like was the right thing. But you're going to make up for that by putting this on hold for now. And then the other thing I want to say is that I would be happy to be a part of these workshops and stuff, but I need to get good information on when these are. I can't expect to find it buried in a five-page letter. You know, I don't know about everybody else, but I work. And so like, I've already put in a full day and I'm sitting here doing this right now. And and then I have other things I have to do. So I need timely and clear communication as to. So I don't know if there's an email I can get on where I can get an email. I mean, to send out a letter for every single thing, maybe that's what you have to do. But I need a good way to get information about these kind of meetings that's not, that I don't have to go searching. So I would just like to put that out there that you could provide if there's some kind of email sign up or if you do have to send a letter, please, or a postcard, make it clear and loud and say, this is what we need to talk about on this date and this time. And I'm assuming it would continue to be Zoom. But I'm I'm very opposed to, I do understand that we'll have to increase rates somewhat, but the amount I'm very opposed to, and and we will have to look at what we have to prioritize. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Linda, I have a quick question for you. This is Jason. Do you do you utilize any of the social media platforms? We're trying to find alternative ways to get communications out broadly in this COVID environment. And any insights you could give to where you would readily be able to find it? We'd love to hear it.
You know, I, I mean, when people send me stuff through my email, like on Facebook, I'll go look on Facebook, but I don't have a Twitter or a chat snap or I don't even know what they are Snapchat. I don't have any of that stuff, and I'm not interested in more stuff. But I would read an email. If I get an email from this, the Water District or the city of Cloverdale that says, you know, I mean, I read all that stuff. So I don't know. That seems like a fairly easy option.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Turner, if I can, just to offer a comment to Miss Miss Redding and other followers of the meeting this evening. The city's website, again, is www.cloverdale.net. Right on the homepage there is a button that is identified as Agenda, Agendas, Agenda packets and minutes. If anybody who accesses our website and clicks on that, there there is a button that is indicated Notify Me. The Notify Me tool will enable anybody who's interested. And I'm glad Irene is kind of showing it here. If you click on the Agenda Minutes and Videos in the City Hall. And kind of in the right-hand corner under Tools, it says Notify Me. What that what that allows is for anybody who's interested to sign up to receive Agenda packets when they are published. And those those Agenda packets will get sent, a link will get sent directly to your email. And I find it is a great tool for community members to access Agenda packets. You can sign up for City Council. You can sign up for one of our six subcommittee meetings. You can sign up for our planning commission meeting. And it's just, it goes right to your email. And they're not large files, they're really. And once you click on the link, you can download the Agenda packet. And that's a great way, I think, to just be informed of when the meetings are occurring and what's on the agenda. It does usually take a few minutes to take a look at the agenda, you know, once you download it. But that, I think, within about three clicks, you can sign up for the to receive, you know, all of the Agenda packets if 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 you're so inclined. And of course, I encourage folks to do that because, you know, just on this item, this discussion started very early on at the at the subcommittee level. And, you know, it was an early opportunity for the community And, you know, it was an early opportunity for the community to weigh in and get involved in, in discussing the, the water, water, water. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you, David. Alan, could you be so kind as to mark the time here and make sure Irene gets that? We'll call this portion of the meeting out later so people can get those instructions. Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it. Irene, when you're ready, the next member of the public, please.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, I believe it was Ms. Marta Dominguez on the campus in Dallas.
Yes, hello.
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 Okay. So I guess I'll start off just by saying that I, I am protesting the increase because of COVID is number one. I think this is a terrible time. Businesses are suffering, people are, don't have jobs or are limited income. And so it would be a terrible time to want to increase any ki, any kind of rate, water rate and the wastewater rate. The other thing is, I'll just read the letter that I submitted because it makes it easier. And so I said, and I said, "We," my husband and I, "would like to protest the increase in water rates being proposed by the City of Cloverdale. The bar graph provided in the proposed increased letter that was sent out, although footnoted, was not referenced, and after extensive research, I was unable to find the article from which the information was obtained. Trying to obtain information about the typical monthly bills according to the city indeed proved very difficult and almost impossible. So therefore, if I take the bar graph provided at face value, I chose to compare Healdsburg, Windsor, Santa Rosa, and Petaluma's water rates, which are only estimated guesses. I used only the water rate and did not include both water rate and wastewater because it was much easier. And I compared them to the household income for those cities." And so based on that, I would say that the bar graph provided is an inaccurate visual of the true cost because the estimated amounts do not correspond to the true rate value amounts. For example, Cloverdale, if I look at the bar graph, the, the blue bar, which is the water rate, goes past the $50 mark. Yet if we look at the current fixed monthly base rate charge, which is included in the letter, the actual amount that we pay is 2432. So why is the information that I'm providing of any importance? It's because how can one legitimately make an argument in favor of an increase or not without all the correct information? If I use the bar graph you have provided, I will protest and say no to an increase when I see that Windsor, whose household income is $70,000 plus, pays approximately $25 for their water rate. The household income comparison with wa, with water rates for the cities of Windsor, Petaluma, and Healdsburg, all their prospective incomes are at a minimum of $7,000 above the household income of $56,000 for Cloverdale, and all of which pay less than Cloverdale. So there is not enough justification for an increase in water rates at this time. And that's it. So thank you for your support.
Absolutely. One of the challenges I think we faced was some of the municipalities that you named there, they don't, for lack of a better term, provide their own water. They buy it from Sonoma Water Agency. And it does end up reflecting lower rates, which is incredibly head-scratching when, when that detail is not brought to the forefront. So definitely look forward to engage dialogue with you, Marta. I, I like how close of attention you're paying to those details.
Thank you.
Irene, the next member, please.
I have Carol Keith.
Yes, Ken. Yes. Oh, and this, and I have my husband, Lenny Von Hogens, been with me. And we know that things are expensive and everything's going up and it's, it's difficult right now for reasons that have already been mentioned. But the one thing that we're really distressed about is that your letter mentioned deferred maintenance. And, and, and folks, that's got to stop because deferred maintenance is always going to cost more than regu, regularly scheduled maintenance. So let, let's, let's manage this better, please.
And, and, you know, from my vantage point, it, it, it seems to me that sending us, as the last person noted, a, a, a graphic or any sort of comparison with other entities, she pointed out very nicely how it just isn't relevant. We need to have, from you people, a very clear spreadsheet, if you would, or, or, or whatever, of your actual costs. What is it costing to do this? Now, Mary Ann will know that I've been in this business for decades. So, you know, it's important for the regular public to see where your money is going because it's not your money, folks. It's ours. And we need to see how that's being spent. And, and as Carol pointed out, deferred maintenance is absolutely not an option. Well, I have no quarrel with paying for what we need, but paying in backlog for what you didn't do is, is, is basically, you know, not, not acceptable. We all know that this is not for free, that you're supplying water to us. And my guess is that yes, the, the Sonoma County Water Agency has its thumb in this at some point. You, you collect water off of your roof and the Sonoma County Water Agency has its thumb in it. But regardless of that, please give us very clear numbers on what you're trying to do.
Thank you.
Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Turner, if I, if I can, just to weigh in, because I, I, I think the comment i, is, is accurate. I think it's important to point out that the, the financial study, again, available on our website, has very detailed financial plan. It's a, it's a 10-year financial plan. And I would encourage the review of that document and the, the very detailed spreadsheet that's included with, with the plan. Unfortunately, it, it's always a challenge what information we do include in a, in a notice. We try to boil it down to the essence, but, and, and that's something we can talk about further i, during, during the workshop.
Excellent. Thank you. Irene, if the opportunity presents itself, can you drop that link to the Agenda report, which will contain this information in the chat that everyone can see? I saw Melanie do it earlier with a different link. Very clever.
And then for our next speaker, we have Robin. Robin, you should be able to unmute yourself and then begin your public comment. I'll come back, I'll come back to Robin. Reese, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay. Yes. Jane and I did send in a letter and I want to thank you for putting this on hold and giving people a chance to really get involved and learn. My comment, and I agree with everything everybody has said before me and I support all I say, one of my thoughts is word of mouth is wonderful, which is how we really caught on to what was happening. And you talked about going in and registering for the Agenda. That's fine, except there's a 72-hour timeline that says it has to be printed or put out 72 hours before, even if it's a week before. That doesn't give people really time to get a hold of the information and learn about it. Is there a way you could make a list that's similar to that Agenda one that sends out emails with information or announcing important things that are happening? Linda commented that she reads her emails. Yes, I read our, our emails too. We don't have Facebook even, so we don't even have any kind of social media with no newspapers. That really limits how we can find out about things. So, and I know there are other people in the same situation we're in. So if you could consider possibly doing something of that nature, I would appreciate it. It would help us and probably other people too. But thank you again for all you've done and I will be digging into this. Oh, one other thing, I did try to find some information on your website regarding this water thing and I, it was very difficult. It was not a quick thing to do, so just FYI. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reese. You know, what I really appreciate about this dialogue that we're having tonight is one of the things that we're trying to address as a council is how to better communicate with everybody. And you guys have offered some, you know, killer suggestions for us to consider. One of the things I do want to bring up in the interest of everybody's time is if you have heard that your point has been brought up and, and voiced by somebody before you, feel free to say, "I second that," or, you know, "I, I agree with that person." And, and we'll definitely note that. And, and again, th, this feedback on communication I find to be incredibly value-added. So with, with that being said, Irene, please.
Robin, I'm reaching back out to you. I see, I'm asking you to unmute and hopefully that works. I see you're unmuted. And welcome to the public comment.
I wonder if it's a circumstance where they may not be aware their computer is named Robin right now.
Right. So if you have your hand up, I only have two people left and one person's unmuted. And Vice Mayor, it looks like we have Wayne returning, so I will leave it at the discussion if you wish to reopen public comment for Mr. D.
Wayne, I don't mind giving you another go around. Please, clear and concise for us tonight, buddy. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to add one thing. Every month, month in and month out, the city does one thing that they don't do the rest of the year. They mail us a water bill. It's the only time that I know of that the city generally communicates with almost every household and every business. That's the place to put in a, on a bright red or pink piece of paper, information about the upcoming hearings so that we have total transparency and we can all know what's going on. Because most of us don't have time to research the agendas and keep up with city business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate it. All right. One last call for Robin. Any comment you'd like to make, please? Now is your time. With that, Irene, any last hands raised?
Yes, one more from Ms. Marta Dominguez.
Excellent. Marta, if you could please, clear and concise for us.
Yes, hello. This is just a comment that was made earlier about bilingual documents. And I'm all for different languages, but I don't like when it says only bilingual because that means we are selecting one particular group over everybody else. And I know this is, then becomes costly because now we're starting to ask for translations to different languages. But I, I really do feel that it's not just to only include one group and not include everybody. So if there are Asians that maybe don't speak English, then maybe also we need to include Asian languages. And so, I mean, you know, that's my, that's my only comment.
Thank you, Marta.
You're welcome. Good night.
So with that, Cloverdale, I will be closing public comments on this particular item and I will bring it back to the council for any final remarks before I have my two cents. Council members, any last comments?
I'll start if you don't mind, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Please.
Yeah, I just am really appreciative of all of the, the input and, and, you know, so glad that we heard from folks and I'm just really looking forward to hearing from everybody on this issue moving forward. You know, hopefully we'll be able to do something. I, I know that the, the rate study is easy to get to at the, at cloverdale.net in, in two clicks. And also, you know, signing up for regular notifications is a really important thing that, that folks need to do. And, you know, I know we're, we're all busy and we all spend, well, even more time, more screen time than we used to. But if we just, you know, can sign up for those notifications and just, you know, take a look at that agenda, every two weeks, they're usually about, you know, two or three pages max. Just see, you know, what is on our agenda for regular council meetings, see what's on our agenda for, for subcommittee meetings. And everybody is in a better position, you know, hopefully a little, have a little, a little bit more flexibility in their schedules, they can kind of keep track of what's going on even in the subcommittee meetings and check in with those on a regular basis because we really need to have people's input. You know, I think, again, just at, at the risk of repeating, which, you know, we frown on, you know, if we, if, if this were happening, you know, not during COVID, you know, I know that we would have had a couple of public workshops, you know, maybe at the Dets Hall, maybe at the Senior Center, you know, done some community outreach to, you know, probably had, you know, maybe a, a chamber member breakfast just to tell people what's going on. You know, city manager and the mayor probably would have reached out to, you know, Kiwanis and Rotary Clubs to come to their meetings and just let people know that we need public input on this. And, you know, COVID has just really put, it's just really made it difficult to do the important community outreach that we normally do. So it's incumbent on everybody to, you know, sign up for those regular meeting notifications. Please, you know, keep up to date on what we're doing. And it's, it's more than just water and sewer. We have so many important issues that we are going to be discussing in the new year and we need folks to participate and let them know, let us know where, where you are on the issues. And with that, I will send it back to my other council members for input. That's my, that's my plug for people. Please, you know, now that you're involved, stay involved. That's, that's my shameless plug.
Marta, please.
Yes, I, I also agree with Melanie. You're involved, stay involved, stay engaged. I tell you, Cloverdale, we have been talking a lot about how to best communicate with you. And it is not a situation unique to Cloverdale. Melanie and I attend very many meetings regarding rural cities and many other communities. And this is a challenge for every city council member and for every city manager. I tell you, we have identified all the bulletin boards in town and we intend to use them. So pay attention to the bulletin boards too. And there is a bulletin board in front of City Hall that is managed by the Chamber. And there you will find information about events in the city and also important issues that need to be addressed. So I encourage you to look at those and give us a call, send us an email. We'll be happy to respond to you. That is our obligation, that is our duty. And I'm more than happy to respond to any of you. You know my email, it's on the website and we can put all of our emails on the chat in a little bit. But also, we have not ignored the Spanish-speaking population. And it is important that we get the, the large number of Latinos and Spanish-speaking individuals. If we have 27, 30% plus Latino population, that has to be addressed. It's not isolating one particular group. It is bringing aware of what is the number of Spanish-speaking in our community. So we'll make sure to continue to work with all of the community. And now that we're having food distribution on Mondays and that very many fam, families take advantage of this, we will make sure that we will also distribute information on Mondays to those people who come to get the, the resources that are available. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and please stay engaged. Put in your calendar when that workshop is going to be, because you'll have two months in advance to keep at it. Okay?
Thank you, Marta. Mary Ann, is there anything you'd like to add this evening?
No, just basically that I'm kind of proud of Cloverdale. You know, you guys are stepping up, and I would like to see it continue, and I will be amongst you soon. So I will be also stepping up. I think it's important that we stay, um, engaged in almost every aspect. There's three or four projects that are coming up that we should be engaging in. And I'm going to try and make that very transparent to many people out there. So good job, Cloverdale, I'm proud of you. Thanks.
Awesome, thank you, Mary Ann. Mark, Bob, any questions, any comments you'd like to offer? We really appreciate you sitting through our, um, our kind of deliberation here. And as we heard from the public, um, is there anything you'd like to offer or ask at this time?
Um, yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I, um, am also impressed by the, the level of involvement by the, um, citizens of Cloverdale. And I hope that I get an opportunity to interact with some of them and to talk through some of the numbers. Um, I just do want to reiterate that the rate study was, um, done based on real needs developed by the engineering department, um, for capital projects. Um, unfortunately, uh, while this delay is important, and I, I wholeheartedly agree with taking a harder look at the numbers, unfortunately, anytime you delay an increase, it only makes it that much, uh, more acute of a need going forward to address those, uh, financial shortfalls. So, uh, we'll be sure to, um, engage quickly and try to come to a resolution as quickly as possible.
Excellent. Summer, any final comments, questions?
Mayor, if I, if I can, um...
Oh, please, sorry, sorry, Summer, David, please go ahead, I'm sorry.
Right, Mayor, excuse me. Uh, the staff's recommendation, just to kind of button this up tonight, is a, is a motion from council in, ending the Prop 218 process and, and bringing back the, the rates, uh, for further discussion at a workshop at a date to be determined in, you know, as possibly as soon as January, uh, 2021.
David, do you still see a...
Mr. Vice Mayor, so moved.
I'll second.
Excellent, we have a motion by Melanie, second by Mary Ann. Irene, please.
Well, you can continue discussion if you like.
Okay.
The Vice Mayor's prerogative.
No, it is, that's right, that's right, I forgot all about that.
I just thought I'd remind you.
Uh, Summer, if you would like to offer any final comments, please, now is the time.
No comment, thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you. So I'm, I'm also very pleased with what came before us this evening. I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I'm very happy to see us looking at July. I had a lot of concerns, um, for, for families facing an increase in January of 2020. I, I feel like this Christmas, um, or holiday season in, in its entirety, uh, regardless of what you happen to celebrate, we have families that are going to be kind of pulling out all the stops this year. Um, kids kind of really tiptoed through it, and this might be, uh, in a year where there's, there's a lot of helplessness. I'm, I'm a parent as well, I have felt a lot of helplessness, uh, throughout 2020. And, um, you know, it kind of boils down to that whole saying, ask me what I won't do to see my kids smile, right? And so I really feel that a lot of our members of the community, um, fall within that same, same kind of category, and, and I'm choosing to voice that. And so to hear that the result of the community speaking up and really ensuring that their voice heard buys everybody the time to look at, how is it that I really want my landscaping to be? What is it that I'm willing to spend money on when it comes to water? And where do I want to see these rate increases happen? The, the, the attention was got by the rate increase, the Prop 218. And, and fourteen hundred letters, or a thousand, or anything really, in that, in that level is, is really something to pay attention to. So I, I'm over the moon that this is the direction that we went in. And, um, I, I just, I thank city staff, I thank the, uh, Hildebrand Associates for, um, really putting together a good product for us and allowing us the, uh, the ability to make informed decisions and move forward. So, uh, with that being said, I have no further comment. Irene, when you are ready, the roll call, please.
Okay, Vice Mayor. Okay, roll call. Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Backsby?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye. Thank you so much, everybody. So, uh, with that, I hope you can forgive me, I'm going to ask for a five-minute recess. Um, please take your time to stretch your legs. Bio, we will be back precisely at seven sixteen. No, fifteen, fourteen, seven fourteen. Everybody accounted for, the best you can tell?
Yep, everybody has now.
Excellent. Thanks, everybody. Welcome back. With that, we have no new business this evening. Subcommittee items, we'll roll right into Subcommittee reports, beginning with Finance, Administration, and Police, please.
Oh, certainly. Well, our next meeting is December 1st, and I'm assuming the City Manager is going to be giving a more up-to-date report on COVID-19. Is that correct, City Manager Kelly?
That is correct, Councilmember. Later in the agenda tonight.
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and defer and say, let the folks know that our next meeting is December 1st at 1:00 PM, and we will be on Zoom.
Excellent. Thank you, Melanie. Planning and Sustainability, please.
Next meeting is, I think, December the 15th, although I'm not sure.
Excellent. Public Works, please.
A meeting here. Public Works will be November 24th, 4:00 PM. And the school, Joint City School District, will be in January.
Excellent. Thank you. Joint City Fire District, we're going to meet in February 2021 at 5:30. And the Homeless Community Advisory Group, I'm led to believe, is still working on hammering out a date. Kevin, any updates on that at this time?
No updates. We may have to switch to a different format. As you recall, we were meeting at the Senior Center and had large groups of people. But we may want to consider a Zoom format. We had about three meetings, and we're on to our fourth, so we'll report back.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it. Council reports, I'm led to believe Melanie Marta submitted in writing. Any callouts you'd like us to be aware of?
Just to let everybody know, I was able to attend the Veterans Memorial observance at the Vets Hall today, and it was a really great event. It was very special. Supervisor Gore came up and read the three proclamations to three Cloverdale residents who were veterans from World War II. So it was a really special day for everybody, but it was a really great day to hear the proclamations from the Board of Supervisors for them. And former Mayor Bob Cox read the proclamation that we approved from the City of Cloverdale as well. So it was a very special day.
That's awesome. Thank you. Mary Ann, any comments or anything?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Informational reports. Oh, Marta, please, I'm sorry.
Yes, no, I just want to make sure that the community is aware that there is food bank distribution every Monday between 4:00 and 6:00 o'clock. This is open to everyone. We are in difficult times, and you should feel totally comfortable coming by, picking up your groceries. And also, there will be some COVID testing happening, as well as some flu shots. So I put my email on the chat. Please make sure that you go ahead and send me any questions or any doubts that you may have. I keep working with the Senior Center on food security here in Cloverdale.
Thank you, Marta. All right, informational reports, please.
Mayor, staff doesn't have any informational reports this evening?
How about legislative while we got you here, David?
No legislative updates or reports at this time.
How about City Manager while we got you here, David?
No City Manager reports.
And would you like to offer us a status update on the current emergency, sir?
Absolutely. I'll provide a brief update. There was an update by the Sonoma County Health Officer, Dr. Sundary Mays, to the Board of Supervisors yesterday afternoon at 3:00 PM. And just a couple of points there is that Sonoma County remains in the purple tier, or Tier One. Our county staff is working through a process of adjudication to reevaluate our tier status, with the goal of moving us into Tier Two, or the red tier. Unfortunately, we're still, new cases are still trending at, you know, above the seven cases per 100,000, which is so critical to moving us to the red tier. So right now, we're at about 11.1 cases per 100,000. Though, we're doing really well in our overall testing positivity. We're meeting the red tier status, and even we're almost into the third tier. There's a really robust strategy to expand intensive testing, and also enhance outreach to our Latinx community, as well as providing financial assistance, more support provided for isolation and quarantine through alternative care sites, and also an enhanced communication program. Do want to mention that on the Cloverdale Plaza on Thursdays, there is pop-up testing by County Department of Health Services. The first week, which was very quickly put together by Department of Health Services, we had 51 tests. And last week, there were 91 tests. So Cloverdale area residents, you know, nearly 141 folks were tested, and there was about a 3% testing positive rate of those that were tested. So I think the enhanced testing is critical to identifying folks that may be asymptomatic and transmitting COVID unknowingly to our community, and really getting them into an isolation or quarantine status so that they reduce the potential for further transmission. So we continue to work through the Resilient Cloverdale Initiative, as I think Councilmember Cruz indicated earlier, and you're trying to support outreach to our community and food distribution, because we know there are definitely some nutritional needs for our community that have heightened due to the impacts of COVID. But, you know, we're working diligently to help the county implement these strategies as best we can at the local level, again, to really try to help move us out of this purple tier, which is the most restrictive tier, to help, you know, get our businesses back open. But it's an ongoing target, and it's important that we just continue to do our best to, you know, implement safe practices, including wearing face masks and physical distancing, and use of appropriate sanitation equipment. So just want to encourage everybody who's listening to continue those practices, because I think it will help make a dent in the COVID-19 numbers. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask something else? David, could you clarify to the community, what are the hours for the testing on Thursdays?
I believe they are 9:00 to 4:00, excuse me, on the Cloverdale Plaza.
Thank you.
I have another little bit of input. If people are COVID-positive and finding problems getting a hold of the 211, I know we've all put out there that you should just dial 211, and it'll give you all of your options. The 211 is not working in some areas of Sonoma County. And if you run into that, please get ahold of me, or Marta, or someone, and let them know, because that is our first contact. And it's, I've had two or three people now that are COVID-positive that are having trouble getting through to get the help they need. So don't give up if you dial 211 and it goes nowhere, because the whole county is having trouble with that. So please, get ahold of us. We can help.
Councilmembers, do we have agreement to ask David or any of city staff to place that information Mary Ann just shared on our Cloverdale City Facebook page? Get that information out there. We can kind of share it and help spread it. Seeing a couple nods. Melanie, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, that sounds good. Actually, I was wondering, because I know the chief is handling a lot of those issues. Do you have any input?
Sure.
As well as getting that information out to folks.
On the input on the civil enforcement aspect of the hotline?
Just on general information?
Yeah, I can put out, or we can blast whatever we need to. The NICSIL is an opportunity. Again, we want to be careful what we put out there. But I'm more than willing to use, from a community standpoint, I can put that information out there. That would be helpful.
I think the announcement of the Thursday testing would be nice, Chief Ferguson.
That would be good.
Yeah, I have to look and see. I wasn't sure. I may have put that out there. I know we did the food program, but I can certainly look to see if the pop-up was done on there. And so we can check that out. I can go back and look, and if not, we can make that happen.
Excellent.
There's another issue that's kind of come up in the last couple of weeks, is that more than one person has gotten ahold of me and said that they are COVID-positive. And they are, in one case, it was a couple with a child, and they're living in pretty high-density situation with multiple generations. So they have left the household. And a lot of people from Cloverdale are going to go north for hotels in Ukiah, because they're so much cheaper than it is in Healdsburg or Santa Rosa. So please, if you are COVID-positive, and if you are thinking about going anywhere, and you do go north to Ukiah, for God's sakes, don't give the Sonoma County your Ukiah hotel address, because that puts you out of the realm of reality. They'll just say, "Well, you're in the wrong address. We can't help you. You're in Ukiah. That's a different county." So use your Cloverdale address if you're looking for housing. And I've had that come up twice now. Well, actually, three times. So there are a lot more COVID-positive people in town that are looking than we realize. So please, don't use a hotel address. Use your Cloverdale address. Thanks.
Mary Ann, are you comfortable sending a summary of that information to David, and they can kind of do with it what they will to spread that information out there?
David's aware. We've talked upon the problem at our Resilient Cloverdale meetings. And I brought that up to Zeke and a bunch of the other guys, too. It's, I've seen it now three times. And people just want to be honest. They just say, "Well, we're in Ukiah at a hotel." And then the response they're getting from Sonoma County is, "Well, you're out of our jurisdiction. You're in a different county, so we can't help you." And I think they're just scared, and they're upset, and they're not... I think we just need to be clear. Please, tell your friends that don't use a Ukiah address at a hotel on those applications.
Excellent. Thank you, Mary Ann.
I have a question, David. If somebody is positive in our community, it's the Health Department is supposed to provide them with housing. Isn't that the case?
There's a place in Healdsburg, the best western in Healdsburg you can go to.
But they have to coordinate that with the county, don't they?
Exactly. They have to coordinate with the county, yes. But if they're giving a Ukiah address just out of not really realizing, you know, I said, "Give them your cellphone number, and then give them your original Cloverdale address that you..." But a lot of Cloverdale people, if they're COVID-positive, are going north, because it's cheaper. I mean, we can understand that, right? But they have to understand that government does not work in favor of the individual in many cases. So you have to be really careful how you fill out that application.
Thank you, Mary Ann. So COVID-19 reports. Any other questions, comments, council members, anybody?
Vice Mayor, just finding a quick correction. The weekly Thursday pop-ups at the plaza is from 9:00 to 11:00.
Can you say that one more time for us, Irene?
Oh, yes. The weekly COVID testing by the county at the Cloverdale Plaza is on Thursdays from 9:00 AM to 11:00. And we do have one hand up in the audience.
Excellent. Thank you, Irene. Councilmembers, before I open it up to the public, any final comments? Seeing none. All right, Irene, please.
Thank you. I have Christina.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. First of all, I wanted to thank the council for discussing this very important issue that deals with COVID, and talking about the obstacles that community members have had to face. I want to really emphasize that Cloverdale seems to get lost in the shuffle. And I feel, and many people feel, that it doesn't get the representation that it needs from our Board of Supervisors, our Supervisor Gore. And I've also shared some of the frustrations helping other individuals in our community that have been tested positive for COVID. It would be really nice if we could do some outreach, and as a city, come up with a place where we can provide our community members in English and in Spanish different resources that are available. We also need to have more advocacy for our community members, because the last thing that somebody wants to do when they're tested positive for COVID, or they're awaiting test results, because we know that that can be very stressful in itself, is having to worry about being shuffled around, "Oh, sorry, you don't qualify because of X, Y, or Z. You know, we can't help you," and having to just try different resources and programs. So I know that there's, you know, you guys are a wonderful city council, but if you guys can make it one of your personal jobs to try to find some resources and people to help streamline the process, because it is very concerning. And as we all know, the community is already stressed enough, and there's a lot of hardships going on. So please make it a priority to help our community members in the time of need. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Appreciate it. Summer, anything you'd like to add? I'm going to call on you all night. You're not getting away with it.
No, not really. Just that, you know, this is also, as everyone knows, a serious thing, and the resources being available to everybody is important.
Thank you. All right. One question that I have, Kevin, with water rates being a topic coming up, how's our grant budget doing for the water bills and stuff?
We have not received any additional requests. We could put it out, maybe we should put it out there again, so that people will know that it's available. But we had our initial, I can't remember the exact number, maybe Suzie remembers, I think it was around 28. But we haven't had any recent ones. So maybe that's something we promote again.
Yeah, definitely. And, oh, please, Marta.
I was told that people have been directed to wait until January.
Kevin, any comment?
I'm not sure where that came from, but we could take applications now. I don't see the need to wait till January.
Yeah.
I mean, we're in the new fiscal year now, so I don't, I'm not sure where that came from, but I don't think it's, I think we could start now, if we wanted to.
Yeah.
If I may comment just briefly, Vice Mayor, I believe it had to do with funding. If the funding had been appropriated for the new year, meaning the new fiscal year.
You were slightly jumbled there, Irene. I don't know if I understood what you were trying to tell me there. I'm sorry.
Sorry. I believe that it had to do with the funding to see if council would be appropriating the original Neighborhood Improvement Grant funding, specific to the new fiscal year, to provide the water billing relief grant funding.
I understand. Okay, so the inquiry that had come in was, are we discontinuing the neighborhood grant because we're fully funding a water grant process? Did I understand that correctly, Irene?
Or a shared program.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it would be both utility relief as well, other community projects, until the money was exhausted.
Yep, that's the way I understood it as well. So people can apply for neighborhood-based programs, or they can apply for help with their water bill. And the application timeframe is open right now. So if that sounds like something that's up your alley, we're not talking, you know, bare bones income or anything, everyday people. If you need the help, ask. All right, thank you. Jose, I'm going to put you on the spot here real quick. I haven't heard anything from you yet. You have some level of information from different jurisdictions other than our own, some of which in different counties. Sonoma County remains in the purple tier. Other counties that have like demographics and similar socioeconomics are not necessarily in the purple tier. Has your firm or anything that you've had experience with or exposure to given you any insight about what Sonoma County might be doing differently?
And, you know, actually, Vice Mayor, one of the things of Sonoma County, and I see there's a lot more push for wearing the masks and everything actually than other counties. So I'm still surprised that we're in purple here in the county. But that is something that county to county, they're struggling with. I know that Sacramento's also having the issue with the tier they're in, in the Central Valley. They're moving up and down tiers a lot. There's a lot of movement there. But there's been quite a bit of analysis in Sonoma County regarding, like you said, just the demographics, the type of work, et cetera, that's been causing it here. It's kind of something that I could tell you throughout California, there, when it brings up to Sonoma County, they're still in purple. It's kind of a surprise. And it's still something that folks are wondering why. So I know that the county has been working quite hard on trying to get to the red, but that's something definitely to watch.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. All right. Any last comments on that one? Let me scroll through my Zoom pictures here. Nope. Okay. Council direction on future agenda items? Any ideas out there? Anybody ready? Not seeing anybody. Excellent. So before I adjourn, let me just take a moment. Thank you, Summer, our student liaison, for participating in the dialogue this evening. City staff, thank you tremendously for a very comprehensive city staff report, and being able to make that pivot on the recommendation as the feedback from the community came in. My fellow council members, it is always a pleasure. Thank you for being here with me this evening. And above all else, Cloverdale, you're the whole reason we're here. Thank you for participating. And with that, meeting is adjourned until December the 9th at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.